It's now ten o'clock. We will open the January nineteenth, twenty seventeen, formal session of Yamhill County Commissioners. And Mark, are you there? Would you lead us in the question, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a time we have set aside for invocation, and today we are privileged to have with us Suzanne Brockie, who is a licensed minister of the Nazarene Church and is currently serving as congregational care pastor at the Church on the Hill, where she was assistant to Jerry Moan for two years. She lives here in McMinnville with her husband of twenty-seven years, and they have six children. And she has agreed to come and do the invocation for us this morning. So Suzanne, if you would, please.
Lord God, Heavenly Father, our Creator, we thank you that you are a God of love. You're a God of relationships and you care about us. That is why you sent Jesus to show us your love and what you are like. He died on the cross for our sins to draw us into relationship with you. You told us to pray for our government so we could live in peace with one another, and we invite you into this meeting today. Father, just take over. Guide our decisions. Speak to our hearts. Help us see with new eyes and show respect for others' opinions. Father, I bring the needs of our government before you, and I ask you to bless our nation and our county. Father, I pray for our leaders and their families. You have appointed them for this perfect time. I pray for healing and unity where there is brokenness or confusion, whether it is in government or in families. And I pray for protection over our leaders, their families, as well as our city of McMinnville, Yamhill County, and the entire state of Oregon. Grant our leaders discernment, Lord, and common sense so they will be strong and effective leaders. Help them today to make good decisions that will be helpful to build up our country for your behalf. For we will be judged on how we treat our fellow man, and you take this very seriously. I thank you for the opportunity that you have given each and every one in leadership, and I pray that they will honor you with their choices. And you said if we need wisdom, we should ask you. So we do need your wisdom today. Your desire is to communicate with us and to lead us. Make this government a blessing to the people of Yamhill County. Father, we pray that your will will be done. I pray that you will help us to love one another as you love us. In Jesus' name and for your glory. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now go to that portion of our meeting that's set aside for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda or would be a quasi-judicial item. If anybody has anything to bring before the commission at this time. Seeing none, we will move forward with the item B on the agenda, the consent agenda. And we have three items on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move to item C, old business. And I see no old business in my folder, so we will go on to item D, other business. We do have consideration of a service agreement between Yamhill County and Han and Associates Incorporated for the Phase One environmental site assessment in the amount of $4,000 effective upon approval. And this is a, to do a Phase One of a 3.4-mile section of the rail system between Yamhill and, I'm sorry, between McMinnville and Yamhill. There's a section that needs a Phase One environmental study prior to a purchase of that right-of-way. And so I would entertain a motion on that item D1.
Also move, Mr. Chair, but I'd also like to add that to ensure that, one of the things we talked about in the informal session Tuesday, that this doesn't necessarily replace the need for doing a farm impact study on everything. Other phases of that, but other than that, I will go ahead and approve this. I would make a recommendation we approve this item.
Okay, it has been moved that we approve item D1. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just add that I think it's important, one of the comments that Commissioner Olson made was that he wanted to know through a farm impact study some of this information. I certainly want to know. I know the farmers do, and I would assume that everybody on the board would want to know how this impacts our farmers. So I think that's something we need to make a proviso in all of this. I am opposed to approving this expenditure. I know we do have the money, so to speak, sitting there for this. But grant money is still tax money, and just because it's there, I don't necessarily think this is a good idea. So I'm going to not approve of this.
Okay. So is there any further discussion?
Commissioner, this study requires an expenditure of county funds. It isn't actually coming from grant funds.
This is coming from county funds?
Yes.
This is, okay. My understanding it was it came from the grant money we had.
No, this is an additional expenditure.
This is an additional expenditure.
And so I would ask the board where you would like to take the money from, whether it's the O N C fund or the landfill license reserve fund.
Okay. So we would, do we need to amend that motion to indicate where the money is to come from?
Yes, and I can just briefly explain to you that the O N C fund currently has $367,000 available for use in other expense. And the landfill license reserve fund, you know, we are facing a revenue freeze in that fund. After we award all of the expenses that were approved in the budget this year and put a moratorium on receipts, you'll have $257,000 remaining in that fund for this fiscal year. So my recommendation would be that you take it from the O N C fund and not take anything further from the landfill license reserve fund.
Okay. So if I could, the motion was that we move forward and approve item D1 with the addition that the $4,000 would be taken from the O N C fund. Is that an appropriate motion?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that only adds insult to injury that this is Yamhill County taxpayer money that's going to be used for something that, had we do a farm impact study, we might not have to do this expenditure if we see that the impact on farmers is going to be significant. So again, the process is something I have a problem with. I do believe we've not taken into consideration not only the impact to the farmers, but also what it's costing the taxpayers. So knowing we've got a tsunami of brand-new taxes that could be coming out of Salem, we've got enormous expenses, we don't know what our revenue limitations are going to be. For us to continue to spend money on this project when we don't even have a dollar figure of what it's going to cost, I think is foolhardy, and I think that that only makes it more clear that this is a project that needs to be vetted before we continue to throw more money after it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Call for the question. All in favor of approving the motion to approve D1 with the change indicating where the money is to come from, signify by saying aye.
Question. And I do also want to make sure of this, even though this is for this item, that the comments by both myself and Vice Chair Stewart get included in the public record regarding the farm impact study. So that being said, I will make a motion.
Just to add to that conversation, and county council will agree that we have throughout this process indicated that we will follow all land use and regulatory encumbrances on us in order to complete this project. So nothing is being done that we are not following all the guidelines. So farm impact studies will be done as they are required.
So as they are required, but not as something that we are going to do because it's good information to have?
No, we will do it as, we have already done a significant amount of work with adjacent landowners up and down the corridor. So there have been a number of farm impacts that have been recognized and have been, there are plans in place for mitigation. And as we move forward with the project, we will continue to work with the adjacent landowners to see to it that their concerns are dealt with.
So, but that's not-
Including the new spray regulations. We will be working with all of those.
But that's not a farm impact study?
It will, no. But that, because this is in our existing transportation system plan, it is not required that we do and complete farm impact study. We have to do a study on the impact to the individual farms as we do any work adjacent to their farms to mitigate any significant changes to their farm practices.
That sounds like a, kind of a circuitous way of saying we're not going to do it because we don't have to do it, but what we've done will constitute a farm impact study because we call it a farm impact study.
No, it's, county council, can you clarify what the nature of the study we will be doing as we move forward with this project?
We'll be making findings, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We will be addressing state law 215-296, which requires findings to address whether there are significant impacts to farm costs or to farm practices. And we've done these numerous, many, many times before. So we know how to do them. We have consultants. There are consultants that know how to do them. We are not formally collecting information on impacts, but we are definitely informally collecting a lot of information on impacts related to farm uses, including the spray issue that you raised. So that's what's required by law, and that's what we will do.
I'm still, I'm still not clear that, I think what this sounds like is a lot of, sort of, political speak for, we're gonna do what we've been doing, but that does not constitute, 215-296 is something that, once addressed, is information I think we need to have. But I don't think we've done it collectively on all of the, all of the landowners because they're contacting us, saying they're concerned about a variety of different issues that haven't been addressed, other than for us to say, "Don't worry about it. We'll address it." How do you have any confidence in an elected body that says, "Don't worry about it," when we're not doing what we can do, we're doing what we have to do?
We have not, we do not own the right-of-way at this point in time. As we move forward with the purchase, and that's the purpose of this environmental, Phase One environmental study, prior to entering in any kind of a purchase agreement, we want to make certain that there is, that we are not buying something that will create additional problems. The nature of the things that could possibly impact the farmers, we have, when we went through our charrettes and all but one or two of the adjacent landowners were involved with the charrette process, where we met with the architects, we broke the entire right-of-way down in segments, working with the adjacent farm owners to hear from them what they saw the impact to the trail to be, and showing with fencing, with vegetation, ways of mitigating the concerns that they had about the trail, the distance from the trail to their property lines. So we have been doing throughout the entire process, impact studies that have dealt with the individual landowners. Now, will everybody be happy? Probably not. But then, we're not ever going to make everybody happy with every decision we make. We know that coming in. So, but right now, we are in the process of trying to find a way of developing this project that will be a tremendous economic driver for the entire area and with the least impact to anybody that's involved with it.
Commissioner, I've been at those, what have been termed charrettes, and I would say that they're more properly termed charades. And I'll tell you why. Because we've had this entire room filled with people who, and we have gotten emails from people who have not only not even known about this, received notification. We had the community center filled with people who said they lived there, they've never heard about it. And so to say that the majority, or that the people who came to those were in favor of it, I think they were, they were not by and large representative of the people who are farming out there. So let's not continue that misinformation because it's not true.
Commissioner Stewart, you know as well as I do that we had just as many people speaking in favor of it as we did against it. And you know, you also know that the majority of the people who were saying they didn't know, they knew nothing about it, was, that was not true. Because half of them that were stating that in that meeting were at those charrette meetings because I've sat with and talked to them. So they, they were saying they were never informed, but they were informed. They knew all about it.
Disagree.
So to say, anyway, what we have on the agenda for today is item D1, and I'd like to get back to our agenda, item D1. And all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I, just, one more question. I just want to make sure I brought up and I amended my, I amended my approval recommendation that we do include not what we can do, or what we should do, or need to do, that we include what I think is due. And I know I've had several people talk to me about not being involved with a farm impact study. And again, I'm all for purchasing this piece of property and moving forward. But I don't know if I'm willing to make that motion without knowing that there's some provision in there to actually do a farm impact study. Not what DLCD says we need to do, not what, we say we knew what I think is best for the process. And I think a farm impact study is best for the process. So if that is, if that can be put in, so as we move forward, everybody has an understanding that that, that we will do one.
Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Stewart, I would state that we have state law and state guidelines on our land use and the things that are necessary for us to move forward. And we as a body will continue to follow all of the legislation and all of the rules and regulations dealing with any, anything we do to adjacent landowners. So we can all decide that on our own, things that we think should happen or shouldn't happen. But that's why we look to what our regulators have told us, this is what you need to do. We will not deviate from what we're supposed to do in any of this instance. And so I don't know how else to state it. We are going to do impact studies, as council indicated. We will do findings throughout the process to make certain that we are addressing the concerns. And, but that's a different issue than what we've got on the agenda here. And the question is on the floor, and I have asked for yays or nays. So if I could please, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
It has been approved two to one, if we would note that. That is all we have under other business. We do have scheduled for this morning docket E-06-16SA for public hearing. And I would now open the public hearing on that docket number. And at this time, I would ask county council to-
Would you first call for abstentions and-
Thank you, yes.
Objections to jurisdiction.
Is there any objection to the jurisdiction of this body? And do I have any abstentions from my fellow commissioners?
I'm not abstaining, but I just want to go on the record as saying that as I talked to the chair, there's a possibility of the length of this, that I may have to leave the public hearing early. But with the documentation goes through, I can get caught up on anything. But as far as an abstention or a conflict, there is none on my part.
Thank you. Is there any conflict or extent? Okay, that being said, council, would you run through the process, please?
Mr. Chair, Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing be advised of certain rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, with regard to the standards of approval, state law, ORS 1977635, requires that we list the applicable substantive criteria that must be met in order for the county to approve the application. The standards will be listed by our county planner in a moment as part of the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the standards for approval. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers in the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. Second, the raise it or waive it rule. Under Oregon law, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision in this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. If you do not raise the issue before the record is closed, you cannot raise the issue on appeal. Third, this is directed to the applicant. Under ORS 197796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval, again, with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And finally, I will also note that under Oregon law, and because this is the initial evidentiary hearing on this matter, any participant, that is, anyone who submits oral or written testimony during the hearing today before the record is closed, may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The request must be made prior to the time the chair announces that the hearing is closed. And, Mr. Chair, I would also ask at this time that you ask whether there are, have anyone wants to put the substance of any ex parte context on the record? Or any, mention any site visits?
Have there been any site visits? Or is there any conflict?
No.
There is no conflict, and there have been no site visits by the commissioners. So we will begin with the applicant. I'm sorry, thank you, Stephanie. We'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. The property is approximately 21 acres and currently has a brewery with a tasting room, a residence, and a hazelnut orchard. The brewery has access off of Benjamin Road. The surrounding properties to the north, south, and east are all zoned EF20, exclusive farm use, and are generally farm parcels which contain orchards, vineyards, and forested areas. To the southwest of the property across Benjamin Road, the property borders the city limits of Newburgh. Property to the northwest across Benjamin Road is zoned VLDR 2.5 and contains rural residential uses. The application states these events will bring customers of all ages to the farm, to the farm brewery, to enjoy beers brewed on-site and catered foods prepared to go with them, often using farm produce and local produce whenever possible. Currently lacking the availability of food options, the farm brewery cannot serve minors. These events will support the brewery operations by increasing visitor durations and allowing families with children to visit and enjoy our products. The application needs to comply with Section 1013.01a4 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance and ORS 215-296. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you. So we will hear from the applicant first. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Christian Di Benedetti, and I am the founder and owner of Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery, a native of Newburgh. And I'm just going to give you guys a little background, if I may. I'll try not to go on too long, but I think it's important for the context of today's hearing. My parents moved on to Springbrook Farm in the summer of 1967, 50 years ago. Shortly thereafter, they began to farm Philberts commercially on what was originally 85 acres, which continues to this day on the remaining 20. Over the decades, locals and visitors have come to seek out our family's Philberts from the little nut stand that my parents operate on Highway 99 West. And many guests enjoyed their bed and breakfast operation, which closed several years ago. In the early years, my parents and older brothers processed the hazelnuts themselves in the farm's historic white barn on Benjamin Road, which is now our brewery. The barn operated as a barrel cooperage and later as a winery for a decade, before it was left without a tenant for seven years. Our property is also adjacent to one of the largest commercial wineries in Oregon. And in our documents that were circulated, there's a letter from Deb Hatcher, the founder of A to Z Wine Works, which is our next door neighbor, writing in support of our application. I grew up on Springbrook Hazelnut Farm, and it was the only home that I knew until after I left for college. In college, I learned to home brew beer, which sparked a lifelong passion. My first beer was hand labeled as Springbrook Brown Ale after the farm, and I still have the very first bottle. Now, I'll note that I tried to bring it in today, but alcohol is not allowed in the courthouse as I was admonished at the door. So you'll have to take my word for it, and it wouldn't taste good anyway. But it was my first effort and got me started. The dream was sparked in my mind then to one day open this brewery on the farm. My passion for beer even took me on an academic trip to study it around the world, and then to a career as a journalist, during which time I gained some notoriety for my books and articles in national magazines and newspapers. However, during that time, I was writing about breweries and learning more. My hunger to open my own brewery grew. I decided to begin work to make this dream a reality, to be closer to my family and to bring new economic life to our family farm. I moved home in Oregon, to Oregon in 2010, began to renovate the barn in 2014, and through many years of hard work, and with the tireless help of various cohorts and coworkers, opened the doors to Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery in May of 2016. The goal was always to be a farmhouse brewery and the model of those I visited in Europe on my studies, where the beers utilize the fruit of the land. Our brewery could not exist in an industrial or urban area. In our case, we use the farm's pure well water, and we have cultured yeasts for the beers from plums and rose hips grown on the farm. We have brewed beers that reflect the homegrown flavors of our farm, using hazelnuts, figs, blackberries, and plums that my family grows. In addition to this, we source from other farms in the Willamette Valley, including ingredients like rhubarb, cherries, kiwi, truffles, and hops. It's our vision to one day grow more of our own hops and brewing grains like barley on the farm as the original settler of the very same land in the 19th century Sebastian Brucher, who was Newburgh's first postman, once did. We embrace the rich agricultural legacy of the area, and we have named multiple beers as an ode to Brucher, as well as our house yeast, which we call Sebastian after him. The intersection of food and beer, which we're talking about today, is also a passion of ours. I co-wrote a cookbook on beer pairing, and the brewery has been recognized for food-friendly, the food-friendly nature of our beers by chefs from Recipe and Source Barbecue in Newburgh and others who would like to host beer dinners with us on the site. We already have a long list of local chefs who have approached us and who would like to partner with us to host culinary events at the brewery paired with our beers, whether they're a casual wood oven pizza night from a food truck or something a little more fancy, sit-down chef dinner. Wolves and People will be the subject of a feature story in Sunset Magazine that was photographed at the brewery this past fall for an issue next year, Pairing, Food, and Beer. The menu in the magazine- The menu in the magazine features our farm filberts in multiple dishes. This large article will help to support Yamhill County's growing reputation as a farm-to-table culinary destination. We like to call this Farm to Beer. Wolves and People has become a community hub. It's something that I did not expect, but I have become very grateful for. Many of our own neighbors in the immediate vicinity walk to the brewery, rain, snow, or shine, to enjoy our beers and have become regulars, letting us know how much they appreciate the experience we offer. We'd be nothing without our local customers and patronage and support. They ask about food options constantly. We hope to bring them an enriched experience on the farm with this permit this year. To do this, we need this agritourism event permit. Our farm, filberts, and other crops will be featured in these events whenever possible. During the brief time we had, the Wild Hunt food truck, under our previously approved event permit, they featured our filberts on the menu. We want to partner with vendors who are passionate about using farm products, and lucky for us, many of our Yamhill County and Portland chef friends are. We are seeking this event permit to further build a bridge between food, beer, and agriculture in our community, as well as to support economic development for ourselves and for our chef partners. We have found that serving food on occasion does increase business and customer satisfaction and will help our brewery thrive. While the brewery does not draw large crowds on a regular basis, in fact, as anyone who has been there knows, it is a very relaxed and mellow atmosphere. We have even been fortunate to draw individual visitors from all over the world. Tourists who have read or heard about us have visited from the Pacific Northwest, as well as Ohio, New York, Florida, Texas, Amsterdam, Switzerland, and even Japan. Earlier this month, we were honored to be named among the best new breweries in the United States by Beer Advocate Magazine, one of the most trusted watchers of our industry. We are one of thirty-four chosen out of eight hundred and sixty-one breweries which opened in the United States in 2016, just one of three in Oregon. We are proud to be located in Yamhill County, and we hope that this accolade helps Newburgh attract future visitors. So you see, Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery is very much about farming and food. It has never been our vision to turn our tasting room on the farm into a tavern. This would be contrary to the idea of preserving the essence of the family farm and the quality of life that has brought me home. In 2016, the Newburgh City Council adopted the Newburgh Strategic Tourism Plan. It states, quote, "Enveloped by miles of rolling hills dotted with filbert orchards, farms, and over two hundred world-class wineries in a thirty to forty miles radius, Newburgh is the base camp for wine country exploration and agritourism, whose quality downtown experience matches the acclaim of the surrounding countryside and its award-winning products. We feel that Wolves and People Farmhouse Brewery on Springbrook Hazelnut Farm embodies these ideals. So if agritourism is indeed one of the goals of our community, what better place to cultivate that than on Springbrook Farm? We thank you, commissioners, for your consideration."
Thank you. I do have some intent-to-speak cards, but they did not indicate whether they were for or against, so I don't have a, I have my glasses. Christian, that's, you just spoke. Then I've got Vicki Shepherd, Joyce Damon, and John Kreske. Are you for or against this application?
I'm against.
I'm Vicki Shepherd, and I am against.
Okay.
Joyce Damon, I am against.
I'm John Kreske, and I am for.
Okay, then I will hear your testimony now, Mr. Kreske.
Do I come forward, or?
Please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Kreske. I am, in full disclosure, I am an investor in Wolves and People Brewery. I am a cousin of Christian and his mother, Ellen. I also, however, live on the farm, on the carriage house, and have for the last year. My interest in the brewery was for the very reasons that Christian cited. It's not a typical craft brewery brewing strong beers and attracting large crowds. I am living on the farm because of its serenity, its beauty, and I believe that what Christian described is what the brewery has demonstrated over the last year. Anybody who visits will observe people reading books, having conversations there with family, bringing their parents, grandmothers. It's more like a coffeehouse. It's not a place that, I understand people, when they hear a brewery is coming into a region, might attract large, noisy crowds, and this is, in fact, the opposite of what this brewery has done. It is about quality, it is about using local ingredients. I can testify that they use farm ingredients because I volunteered to help pick those figs and plums and so on. And I think that the people who come are there because they're fascinated by the process, the quality, and the association with food. And I think it's the ideal example of prestigious agritourism location for the county, and so I am fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other testimony in support of the application? Seeing none, then, we will now ask to hear from the opponent. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David S. Wong. My address is P O Box seven five six, Newburgh, California. At this time, I'd like to approach the bench to county council for the purpose of giving the documents that you do not have.
You can hand them to the staff, that's all.
We have just heard lengthy accolades for homebrewing and farming. I support such endeavors. What I don't support is the creation of a farm. Now, we look at the activities of this brewery, as stated in the first page of the documents that I gave. Your conditionally used permit is the one who allows the hours of operation. Now, if this was agritourism, do we have tourists that are out at nine, ten o'clock at night? Well, of course, we have people touring all over the place, okay? But they're drinking, there's live amplified music there, and these were identified in two separate webpages that are part of your documents. But let us first look at the zoning, the exclusive farm of twenty acres. Now, you've talked about your farm impact studies, but there's one thing I think that slips the mind of all rural jurisdictions, is that do you audit these farms that have these distinctions for tax purposes? What I mean is, in the application that sits before you, the applicant has stated that only ten acres are managed for filberts out of twenty-one point five three acres. So we have to ask our planning director, or the principal, or anybody involved, did you verify what's actually going on at this so-called farm slash brewery? And not just by giving out an okay to go forward. Now, I've discussed the issue of procedure here many times, well, at least twice, for this, the operation of your planning department. One, your planning department went ahead forward with issuing a conditional use permit prior to the exhaustion of all administrative remedy. That's why we are here today. That also basically cuts your knees out as commissioners, as being irrelevant to the decision-making of the principal of the Planning and Development Department. I further assert that, and question really, did you utilize your planning committee members? You have a planning commission. There's a whole bunch of those committee members. Did this first get vetted through the planning commission prior to going over to the Planning and Development Department? Absent that, we have to raise the flag of, you know, what's, why do you even have such a commission? Now, I've talked about the zoning of EF twenty, and should there be an issue that the farm is not being utilized for the twenty acres or twenty-one point five acres for agriculture, with the subtraction, of course, for the residential home, the swimming pool, the tennis courts, and whatnot, okay? This triggers the county assessor, and these documents are also part, now, I didn't make this up, this is state revenue stuff. Also, there's documents in there from the state revenue people about how they formulate the profit from these farms to justify the various designations, be it exclusive farm eighty acres, forty acres, and twenty acres in this particular case. Now, you complain about revenue. I assert that not only does this farm need to be looked at, but all farms, especially one of the letters that was written in here today about a neighboring winery farm that also has ground that is fallow, that could be looked at by the county assessor for the purposes of reestablishing whether they meet the criteria associated with exclusive farm zone tax breaks. Now, let's look here at our packet. Now, I do not know if you have the same packet I do. Now, I'm not inferring, suggesting, or implying any subterfuge by anybody, but first, though, it's the staff report. Now, before this meeting started, each one of you commissioners had to assert and testify that there's no ex parte communications with anyone concerning this issue. I assert that you were basically indoctrinated because of this staff report. You were sensitized to the applicant's position without the opposition's review and counter rebuttal of the position. So an ex parte communications exists, and you can simply look through the staff report and see how the applicant's position, after given documents by either the planning department, wherever they got them, primarily my documents, emails, memos, what have you, my writings were incorporated into the applicant's position that has now become a public record, a public record that is an ex parte communication that is benefiting solely the applicant as opposed to equal treatment under the law for the opposition. This is, there's no argument about this. It is clear. Now, Mr. Chairman, you have to also make inquiries. Now, I've initiated two public record requests, and I've been given, basically, a formula that, from my position, is nothing more than a shakedown operation, because there's no level of where this money ends for fees and whatnot. I assert that the whole public record program is nothing more than a profit center, but we'll talk about that at another time period. But let us look here at the onsite use. Now, the hazelnut orchard, and we have to, I don't know if that's a county arborist, but that should be part of the issue, as far as looking at how old these trees, do they actually grow these? Because if you have only ten acres of managed land, and you have this little stand out there on Highway ninety-nine selling your nuts, well, we talk about profit, well, I guess anything's profitable, I mean, if you grow it and sell it, depending on your overhead costs and whatnot. We also, for a sidebar, we heard testimony from applicant about the use of pure water. I refute that assertion. The only pure water that you get is from reverse osmosis. I know that because I'm a trained chemist, and I've worked reclaim water facilities. So these parts I know. So what we have here is health and safety issue with the farm. We do not know the actual contents of the well water. I suspect it's very high in iron, but however, if the water is treated or not, precipitating out the iron, running it through a water softener, I do not know that. Okay, neither do any of you that sit before me. Furthermore, we have the creative dabbling with microbiology. Now, these yeasts and other bacteria that are used are fine and dandy, if you know what you're doing. But they're also the avenue of something else growing in the midst, and this is being put in the stream of commerce. And this, too, I do not believe, has been regulated by the county health department. So you have two functions here, that you're entering in foodstuffs into the, into the stream of commerce, which unsuspecting tourists coming in to drink beer do not know. Now, further, let's look at this tasting room business. Now, traditionally in wineries, and I'm not saying all wineries are the same, or all breweries are the same, but you get mainly twenty-five to fifty milliliters of wine to taste. Here, at this brewery, you're actually paying money from, I do not know the actual volume, but I suspect it's anywhere from four to five hundred milliliters per glass. I could be wrong, okay? But there's no stopping people from drinking more. Now, I just want to introduce an official document from the state of Oregon. Now, all of you have seen this document before. Me, coming up from California, I have to pay straight attention to it. This is the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Oregon driver's ban, right? Now, this applies to all these wineries and all the breweries, and by the way, as of January first, I don't know how your legislature or our legislature works, but they can now sell hard alcohol, and that was part and parcel of the condition of use. But let me read this one, two sentences. Impaired driving. Never get behind the wheel after drinking alcohol or using other impairing drugs, period. Leave the driving to somebody else. Alcohol is the most common intoxicant involved when drivers are impaired, period. The rest goes on to tell you what's going to happen to you if the Oregon State Police or Newburgh Police pulls you over, and if you, if you give the, if they ask you, you've been drinking, and you've been saying, like one neighbor says and writing, "Oh, I've been just sipping beer, not chugging it," rest assured, the Oregon State Police do not have such humor for that matter. Now, we look at the rural fire protection. Now, being in the rural areas, there's one thing that just jumps out at everybody, fire. Why? Well, nobody really likes to burn, but on top of that, there are no infrastructure, there's no infrastructure to support rural fire services. They have to truck in their water. So if this barn, which we do not know, how, well, I do not know how old it is, there's talk that it was built in the early nineteen hundreds, we have testimony that brings in fifty years of being on the barn, so let us say it's in between fifty and seventy-five years, just for discussion, but it could be wrong. This barn is an old wooden barn. If you, because of your construction, of your conditional use permit, they're permitted to have business invitees to the land, two hundred and fifty of them. Of course, we have to ask a subbar question, how is the county going to enforce this? Obviously, they can't enforce it. They haven't enforced anything unless it's complaint-driven. And that's bad, because that's putting neighbors against neighbors, and this whole hearing is today predicated on the Planning and Development Department procedures screwing up. So we have now neighbors against neighbors, which should never happen. I mean, even the Bible says, "Lo, your neighbors are sinners." I didn't make that up either. Now, let's look at this. For health and safety purposes, do, does this barn have a sprinkler system? Because it's an old wooden barn, people are smoking, whether it's cigarettes or doing doobies, I do not know. I know that they do smoke, because I've seen them from my pasture. Fine. Fire is foreseeable, especially with drunk people, and you can't go ahead and say this is a collegial atmosphere where people are sitting, reading books, drinking beer, for a price. This is a commercial enterprise, as opposed to, you know, a winery where they're given just a little bit of beer or a little bit of wine, and hopefully they'll buy a case of wine and take it away. These folks can drink literally liters of this stuff, and that's fine. But back to the fire issue. Just a couple of months ago, in Oakland, California, we had thirty-five people either get burned to death or die from asphyxiation, and then their bodies got burned, because it didn't have sprinkler systems or the proper number of ingress and egress out of the structure, the proper fire extinguishers, and so forth. So we have to ask ourselves, are you permitting this? Are you going to go forward with this? Because you have to ask yourself at all times, what are the benefits and what are the detriments of allowing this project to go forward with the agritourism side of it, as well as the other issues that I raised? Because one thing is there's certain, if somebody gets drunk and they leave and they go down that windy road on Benjamin and go out to ninety-nine West and they get whacked, well, a good lawyer is going to come knocking on your doors. And besides, let us now do a segue. A good lawyer did knock on your doors several years ago, in reference to this property, in reference to the property owner, Mr. McClure. Mr. McClure successfully took... Mr. McClure successfully took you, took this board of commissions, not the current board, but previous board, into the circuit court, under the doctrine of vested rights, because absent his commentary now about wanting to preserve agriculture and the bucolic nature of the farmland, at that point in time, his interests were residential development of this property. Now, this property used to be, well, there's two parcels, but the total was sixty-nine-point-one acres. Now, the Friends of Yamm Hill County, a very astute group, came in, now, remember, the owner of the property prevailed at the circuit court level, but they did not prevail at the Oregon State of Appeals. These documents are in your packets. The Oregon State Appeals decision is there, and you can see. After that period, after that ruling, where they were reversed and remanded, they could go back to circuit court, but the lawyer knew that there's no way to win, so at some point in time, the owner made a decision to sell off a significant portion of the properties, approximately forty-seven-point-four-seven acres, to what it is today. So, when you see these documents, and you see all this, this warm, fuzzy feeling about prevailing with agriculture and family business and all this stuff about the brewer policy, remember, all that glitters is not gold, and there's always something else to talk about. Now, we have, from our learned principle of the planning and development department, item eight, previous actions. Quote, "The property has an extensive list of previous land use actions which are in the tax lot file, but will not all be listed here." Period, close quote. I assert, for the purposes of another meeting, if one should be needed, that all documents relevant to this issue, past, present, and future, or I'll be even more reasonable, just past and present, are going to come in. We have also, in the letter from Mr. McClure about your, needing your support for this project, stating that he was at least fifty years on the property. So, at least fifty years of his documents are going to come in as well. So, we do not know the scope of the intent of the family, unless, of course, they came to move Jesus after getting whipped up on at the Oregon State of Appeals to reassess the need to preserve agriculture in Oregon, which I believe is a bunch of hoopla. Now, what we have here too, is something that really troubles me, and it looks like this, now, listen, all these doc, documents that are listed in this report are also going to come in, all right? I just don't want to go through and list all the numbers, because it speaks for itself. In other words, everything that's in here is going to come in, so I'll make that clear. Now, this, this business, now, I think whoever created this ordinance must have had a few beers or something else, because you look at section ten thirteen-point-oh-one, A three, and we look at subsection B, and it says, quote, "Shall not individually exceed seventy-two consecutive hours." Now, that's worth a bet. Now, what does seventy-two consecutive hours mean to you? What it means to me is we have the possibility of having Woodstock in Oregon over there, with music going around the clock for three complete days, but this is a function of you folks, meaning you being previous commissioners who drafted this legislation and put the terms, "Exceed seventy-two hours." None of you did this. Other, other people did. Then it states, "One of the six events may allow artificial application of voice or music from eight to ten P.M." Well, I don't see where any commissioner can write into law that other residents across the street, a narrow little road, where I come from, their sidewalks, but nonetheless, what empowers the commission of Yamm Hill County to state as a function of an ordinance that we can keep you up until ten p.m., and you're going to be compelled to listen to this, no matter what you like or what you do not like? And it's for the express purpose of a commercial enterprise, because we go back and we look at the baseline argument for the exclusive farm zone twenty. Are the products that are boasted in all sorts of areas about, "Oh, fruits, oh, nuts," that are all used in the process of beer, all these artificial use? So, you get a rotten plum and throw it in a vat of beer, and you call it "Oh, wow," naturally occurring yeast? Or is it something more sinister, like the creation of a bar or nightclub, whatever you want to call it, under the guise of exclusive farm owners or twenty? Now, this is something that you all have to look at, because of the fact of revenue. And in Oregon, I realized there's only certain revenue streams you have. You have property tax, and you have income tax, and every now and then, federal government will give you a CBVG grant or something like that, but you can't really rely on those. Property tax and income tax, you can. So, you have to do that balancing act, again, of the benefits of going forward or the detriments of going forward. I consider them to be detrimental, because of the fact of all the potential litigation, because there's several federal questions here. The first federal question deals with the diminution of property values that abut this brewery operation, especially with these articles about where you can have two-hundred-and-fifty people coming in, that narrow little road on Benjamin, okay, into the beer place, this amplified music business. Then you look for these webpages. There's two webpages that I've included in your packet. You look at that to see if this is just an agricultural tourism business or a nightclub with reference to the musical acts and whatnot. You can also look and see that they were given eighteen agricultural events as a function of this conditional use permit. These are stated in the application, which, I might add, is troublesome, because you almost need a scanning electron microscope to read, because of the font size. But you can look at the application yourself and see what I'm talking about, and this is going to be very important as we go forward. Now, the, we'll talk about the access to the park. The parking area is situated, by testimony from applicant in writing, that it can hold a hundred-and-fifty cars. The parking lot was constructed with summer, while I was coming up from San Jose, California, several trips to my property. There are some serious issues here. One, this takes away farm money for other, to the purposes. Now, you have to read the statutes that are included in your packet to see the definition. I did not make this up. Now, we have two other issues that flow from there. One is that you have an area for a point source of pollution, parking lot. You have at least a hundred-and-twenty-five or a hundred-and-fifty cars coming at various stages of repair or disrepair. Cars are known to leak antifreeze, oils, and other hydrocarbons onto this gravel parking lot. As I have found out, it rains in Oregon. It rains a lot, and this water is going to carry these pollutants into the nearest ditch, which is in front of the parking lot. This ditch empties out, as applicant has stated about the property being on the national registry, and to a federal protected park. So, now we have a federal question with reference to the swimming water accident, because left alone after this today, and I do not blame applicant for this, all right? Not at all. But therein lies, if you allow this to occur without, because there's technologies to prevent this type of pollution, and why wasn't that incorporated? Just as there's technologies for the reduction of odors associated with beer, and also for the reduction or the prevention of fire. All these technologies exist. All other companies or businesses have to go forward with this, especially in their more urban settings. But we do not see that there. We have to raise the issues like what? Okay, we then look and see, we have, we have the, from item two on, two through nine, or let's say two through eight, we have significant ex parte communication with the applicant and unknown persons, whether in the planning and development department or county administration, who knows? But they're incorporated as gospel truth in this document on the public record. Nowhere in items two through eight, or anything from the opposition that says, "Hey, wait a minute, this isn't true. This isn't what it's supposed to be. This is a mischaracterization or misrepresentation." All it is, is the applicant and whatever person and the employee of Yamm Hill County decided to incorporate by reference in these documents. Now, we'll look at, I want to look at, well, here's this alcohol thing from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Remember, this is the first year that you can sell hard alcohol in wineries and breweries. So, here you're coming in. Let's look at their hours of operation, four to ten P.M. So, you come in there, you have a couple of beers, maybe you want to do a shot of tequila. Now, I'm not saying that the applicant is going to have the hard alcohol in there, but he is entitled to it by Oregon state law, and if you permit this, does the county, are you opening up the county to litigation because of that narrow road, windy road that dips in it, Highway ninety-nine on one end, Spring Brook on the other end, going down dips, and these things are very nasty when it rains if there's ice. I've learned that out since my first year here, and so remembering our little Oregon manual here. I didn't make this up either. Now, this portable toilet business, that is a nuisance in itself. Septic, basically, there's septic collars that come in and pump these things out. Septic samples are the most growth samples that you can ever imagine. They're worse than the headworks out at your water pollution control plant, by orders of magnitude. I smelled these odors coming from these porta potties while discussing various times with one of my neighbors. My poor neighbor who faces Benjamin Road has to not only look at blight with a bunch of pallets in this refrigerated unit, which I do not know if it is permitted, and have to smell the odors from these porta potties, which were right next to a food-serving truck, which personally I would not do if I was running the operation. We also now bring into the issue whether permits were pulled for any type of electrical plumbing or what have you, because there's significant electrical work, and that has to be fairly doubtful. Now, we look at the application, and this is where I do not know if I have a document that is different than yours, because from my position, and which I will show you from my document that I have, it is unbelievable that such a document would have been allowed to go forward, and to not only that, go forward, but to permit at least nineteen, and I'll say nineteen, I could be wrong, there could have been a typo made by applicant on his webpage. We have to allow for mistakes, because I make typos all the time, and he gave a typo of an event on November twenty-sixth of last year. But it's not listed here in this dates. Now, we have to ask, one, are these, is this font size reasonable? I say no, because if you photocopy it enough, especially for a jury, they're not going to see it. I mean, it's just going to be blurred, and someone's going to have to read it through. Now, why this was allowed, of course, you could always make the excuse, "Well, I wanted to get it all," but it's still not reasonable. But let us go down to the first page here. We look, amplified music. I have to find myself where the page is. Okay. Number three, it's on the first page, and I, pardon me for my error. "Will sound amplification be used at all, at all, during the events? Yes or no?" This document, in my opinion, was constructed by, I mean, the answers to this document was constructed by a cosignature, an alleged cosignature to this document. We'll get into that later. It was under practicing, well, a retired attorney, the owner of the property. This was intentionally left blank. This is a mistake, because we look in this microscopic font size, quote, "Qualified, quietly amplified recorded music will be played at all dates." Period. "There are no set performances by musicians at this time." Period. "All events would take place during open hours, Friday from nine P.M., or four to nine P.M., Saturday, two to ten P.M., and Sunday noon, five P.M." Close quotes. Now, here is an advertisement, "Quietly amplified." Is that just precious? Of course, wow, sound is measured in decibels, and when you look at those webpages and you see the live music this advertised there, this isn't wise. And if you want to live next to something that can go twenty-four hours with temporary restrictions for bans or whatnot, potentially, because that's allowed, I support that. And it goes to the issue of diminution of property values to surrounding properties. Now, I, once again, you know, you see the agricultural use waving its perverse little hand, because it's a good thing to protect farms. I mean, I dress like a farmer. I do, I like to farm. I intend to farm my little place, not for sale, but for giving it to seedling centers and whatnot. And once again, you must have a methodology to actually verify and quantify these farmlands, so other farms, and I'm not suggesting or implying any harm to anybody, but there is the ability to game the system, and to game it in a very significant way, because, one, the planning and development department isn't going to enforce anything unless there's a complaint, and send their sole co-endorsement guy out there, and he can find it in his presence. So, that's really a very bad thing to do for government. But this is where it gets me. On the that, on the last page, and I do not know if we have the same copy. You look at the last page, does your page have electronically altered signatures with no dates? Is that truthful? I mean, I'm asking the commissioner, you, Mr. Chairman, is your, in other words, does your document look like this?
It's the same as yours, yes.
All right, so we have, we do not know, no third-party attorneys would know, that these are accurate signatures, and why have they been reduced electronically to this size and no date? But what's even more glaring is how the planning and development department allowed to be incorporated into the public record, such a slip, flip-shod document wasn't even notarized. So, we don't know that the people assert that they're telling the truth under what's called false swearing here in Oregon, and California would call it perjury. So, what we have here is a document that could be bolivized, and yet, "Oh, I didn't sign this, it's not notarized," and none of you would know, because you have to rely on your departmental heads and the county administrator not to allow things like this to occur. Now, I didn't make any of this up. This is what I have. Now, I've also said before about how do you verify, and how do you know people are being truthful, okay? And so, we do not know, but this right here shows exactly why, in addition to the ex parte communications, which is a federal question too, but why this whole thing should be shot down, because this is an incomplete application. It was signed, if this is Mr. McClure's signature, remember, he's an honorable attorney of the state of Oregon for I don't know how many years, all right? And he signed, if this is his signature, he knew what he was doing, all right? He knew by utilizing these fonts what he was doing, because he's an honorable attorney and a lot smarter than I am. Now, this is not reasonable at all. So, we have, right here before you, the ability to nix this whole thing and make the applicant reapply, under the guise, you know, of verification of what's actually going on. Now, we go into notice, public notice. Well, I'm a property owner, along with my wife, that, as the property owner pointed out on the little flat map up there, and the driveway is basically right across this little street called Northeast Benjamin Road. Now, one of the things that my wife and I object to in this whole thing is that every car that comes out of there around ten o'clock shines her headlights right into our bay windows, and that's a nuisance, but that's another point. The bigger point that I make in here about public nuisance, or public notice, is as a property owner who's in good standing with the county, with reference to paying property tax all the time, and has never given notice as to this project. I was just made aware of it by chance, by my good and dear neighbor, Joyce, who lives right next door to me. So, right now, we have another issue surrounding the county administrator and not having the necessary auditing control or internal controls. Now, that's a legal term, internal controls. I didn't make that term up. That came out of your last audit for fiscal fifteen, sixteen, I believe, a lack of internal controls. It was all over the place. It's about... As a matter of fact, I'm surprised the auditor didn't use a little bit more colorful words to describe what's actually going on. Nonetheless, that's another issue. But I wasn't given notice. Now, we have the public notice and all, and we have one person in here who states they live in Newburgh, but look at the, look at the zip code, this person actually lives in Sherrwood. So, so we have friends that are coming in, we have Mr. Laurie, his letter, he wrote another letter just the other day so he can incorporate a little, oh, a little fuzzy story about the hazelnut drying operation. So, but that's a matter of record. And then, of course, you have Ms. Shepherd's letter. Now, what we also have here, oh, and Joyce's letter, we have that too. None of them use, by the way, any of these microscopic fonts. They use regular handwriting, it's reasonable, and they use an additional page if necessary. Then you have my letter here, which I did not write from an unfinished home, which applicant has failed to write. I wrote it from my office in San Jose, California, which I still own the property. And this, and this letter and all the issues contained within the four quarters are also coming in. And these are very, very nasty, nasty torts that are here. arising from this conditionally used permit, the non-verification by the county of what's going on over there, and so forth. Me, I'm not a litigated person, but on same token, this is my home now, I'm an Oregonian. And I'm not going to suffer any financial loss or be chopped up by a bar or anything else for that matter. We have in here a very disturbing document, it's just written, signed by somebody, but there's no address or anything. But yet, it's public record and it's incorporated in the document. Then, of course, you have the applicant's response. Now, once again, the applicant's response is replete with ex parte communications with reference to documents given or communicated to applicant without the knowledge or the ability to participate by the opposition. Now, Learned Counsel, our last meeting in December, or December 20, when I was discussing the issue of just procedure for ex parte communications, he arose and bade up me to stop and made you all do not let me speak. But yet, where is County Counsel with reference to the ex parte communications that are replete throughout this entire document, with reference to giving preferential treatment under the law to the applicant and/or owner, and/or persons unknown, investors, to the detriment of those in opposition who play by reasonable judicial rules? So, we have a federal question there. Now, we have all this business about taxi cabs and limos. Well, in previous times, limousines have a very hard time navigating these roads. They've had to back up at least one time or twice, you know, I don't know how many times, and their neighbors, park, or variable. But they're limousines, they're big, and these roads are not that easy. Law enforcement, all right? The county bless our Oregon State Police and our county sheriffs. Now, I have yet to see a county sheriff, I've seen a Newburgh police cruiser, cruising down northeast Benjamin, but that's not their jurisdiction, although, in my opinion, they should be able to do whatever they want. That's just my opinion. Now, you're going to have to consider, because you will be compelled, make no mistake, you will be compelled to direct the Yanville County Sheriff to put the necessary patrol structures out there to catch drunk drivers, because this is very foreseeable. People slamming down beers, feeling fine, maybe they have secondary marijuana smoke, I do not know. Okay, I would assume that the applicant does not want any of that to happen, because he appears to be a good, honest guy, and I do not like speaking like this, because he's my neighbor. And you're supposed to love your neighbors yourself. Now, now we get in to the creative conditional use permit authorization by our Learned Department of Planning and Development. And these are just a matter of record, and these all will come in. Now, we, we, this 18 beer tasting events, let's look at that for a minute. Now, that's semantics. Now, do you taste a beer, do you have like a tablespoon of it? Or you have 500 mils of it, a half, half a liter? And then you say to yourself, "Man, it's a hot brew after this, I taste a little frosty brew, and I want another half a liter." "Oh, it's okay, because I'm used to driving this way, and I can do it, I'm not drunk." All right? It's tasting, it's inviting alcohol, of course you taste it, of course you do, but you're slamming down quite a bit of it. Now, we have the appeals process here, of which we all know who's who under all this other business, and the notice of the board here. What we have here too is a little compilation of documents. Now, I apologize that I didn't tab it out correctly, but every document that is relevant to this so far to date, not incorporating the documents that may or not exist from the 1900s, or at least from 50 years ago, or from the docket numbers and other documents that our Learned Principal of Planning and Development has generated. And let's see here, I've asked for a, a deferral of this, because it's public record business, but upon receipt from the Principal of the Planning and Development Department, as well as from Learned County Counsel, there exists another controversy. And this controversy deals with what I said earlier about the issuance of the public records with reference to creating a profit center. Now, these people are already on the payroll, these documents are already a matter of public record, and you shouldn't be out there making a ton of money, unless, Madam County Administrator, that there's necessary financial transactions or accounting where they recoup this money, and it's either subtracted from their budget, or it goes back into the general fund. But in any case, it's a profit center, because these folks are already on the payroll, and this acts to thwart and defeat the entire Public Records Act. And this goes to the issue too of citizens not wanting to participate in their own democracy, because, hey, if you don't have $250 to come before this admission, which is another issue of non-American activities, in my opinion, you certainly don't have the tons of money you're going to need to do a public record search that deals with preparing adequately for today's parade. So, there's people behind me that don't have that money. And I particularly have a better thing to do than spend $250 to come down, although, I will say, it is nice to see your smiling faces. And so, that part, my days have been. And so, we have that, and we also have all these emails and stuff from, that I sent in. And you will look, when you read them, and I left them as they are, I didn't blow off the fonts or anything, so I left them, you know, as they printed out. But look at them with the eyes of the applicant's incorporation into the staff report and the applicant's statements in writing, and you will see, and I'm at least immortalized from the applicant's point of view. Here is your webpages. Now, these webpages are taken, there's certain tabs that I did, but the URLs are listed. And you can look at these yourself, and the balancing act is it agricultural or is this a bar? A nightclub, a tavern, whatever you want to call it. And remember, the hours of operation, 10 o'clock at night. And ask yourself if you want to live next to something like this. We have then, of course, Mr. McClure's letter dated January 11th, 2017. Now, he goes on the, "Well, we are the 50-year-old owners, blah, blah, blah." And, but he didn't confide in you the appeals decision. Now, this is part of your package. And the appeals decision is quite significant, very significant, because the county administrators at the time, not the county administrator, but the county commissioners at the time, authorized this business to go forward, ended up with a lot of egg on their faces, and they probably had to pay the requisite attorney fees. Then we see more letters in here traditionally showing up the last possible moment from the Chamber of Congress. We have one though, that is from a neighbor, that is the farthest neighbor away that I know of to this bar. And he complains, you know, about music waking him up, and of course, the road. Now, if you're going down 99 West Highway off that Hoover Highway, and you pull into that little nut stand that they talk about, you run the very significant rest when you pull out, you're going to get, going to get smacked. Now, hopefully, nobody's been in an accident, hopefully, there never will be an accident. But you really have to send somebody down there to look and see the safety of this in breast and e-brust for this little nut shack. Besides, if you, even without the nut shack, you have to slow to such a rate to be able to successfully navigate that sharp, narrow turn. That in itself, my wife and I, we just opt to go out with a Springbrook and come in the back door, because it's just not safe. And so, this is Mr. Riley's letter. Now, of course, we have a secondary letter from Mr. Laurie and his good honorable wife about the goodness of the little nut drying operation, and it's now defunct. Oh, then it's just come to mind. Now, the issuance of a brewery that used to come from a winery now at front. I made a couple of phone calls down to Salem and these farm use folks. And when I told them what had happened, they said, "Well, that's not legal." They said, "All this, all this is for wineries, not breweries." And I said, "Well, Yanville County went ahead in their provincial wisdom and gave a permit for a brewery." And I said, "Well, that's not, that's not appropriate." So, we then have to ask County Counsel to investigate this matter, to see if this is correct, and to also make comment on whether or not state law trumps some ordinance or commission by the Planning and Development Committee unbeknownst to Commissioner, or with the Commissioner, it's okay to allow an old, defunct winery who imported grapes to make their money, to be transformed into a brewery. So, that's another, another significant issue. And we have a letter here from the county engineer, which also should look at the structural aspects of this barn. But remember, this barn goes back to, who knows, I do not know, it's 75 years or better, and whether it's structurally sound. It is a tinderbox, in my opinion. Now, here's your legislative intent. Now, this, this is really neat. This deals with, it says, "What land, quote, what land qualifies for farm use assessment input?" Now, once again, if the land is in a EFU zone and is used primarily to make a profit by farming, it qualifies for the special tax assessment. Okay? "Qualification of farmland for special assessment is determined as of January 1st." So, that puts an affirmative duty on you folks, the commissioners, to direct to the County Counsel or the County Administrator, "Hey, what type of plan do you have to assess all the farms in our jurisdiction in accordance with this Oregon Department of Revenue document?" And it goes on to say, "To qualify, quote, to qualify, your land must currently be used and have been used in the previous year exclusively for farm use." See farm use definition below, here, close quotes. So, then we turn to the multiple statements in various venues, be it the webpage, be it the forum, be it before, little writings in the little funky newspaper called Newburgh, whatever it is. "Oh, we, we do things with fruits and vegetables from our garden." 21.53 acres is the issue. 10 acres are admitted to be utilized for the production or the management of production of hazelnuts. Now, of course, we then say, we don't know if that's truthful, because we don't know about those signatures on that, on that form, and they weren't notarized. So, we do not know. But this bears very good information for the commission. And you might ask yourself, if you didn't hear about this before, why are you hearing it from somebody who just moved up here from California? That, that should really cause you to have a little chape, chape high. Then we deal with, and you've got to see County Docket C-10-14, which is a predecessor document to the, to today's activities. And you see some more letters from people that are complaining about the default, they don't use diminution of property values, they just use a reasonable term called loss of property value. One of which, by the way, has sold her home. She listed it at $500,000, and I believe she got, and I do not know the exact amount, but it's been told to me, about $410,000. So, does she have a cause of action in joining a bifurcated issue? One, in joining brewery, or two, in joining the county, Yanville County, if it can be proven that the loss of revenue that she did not get from her home was because of breweries across the street with these stinking porta potties and brewery making, in which the applicant says, "Oh, it just smells like fresh bread," or maybe come from wineries or other breweries in the area. I suggest that you really look into this matter, because this is just not one person, because this raises a federal question with a mountain of controversy. Because a mountain of controversy could go into millions, if all these other people along Benjamin affect the neighbor's society, "Hey, county, you permitted this, we can't sleep, we can't enjoy our property, there's nuisances, there's trespass, and we have a diminution of value. We're not going to be left unless we get meat holes." And so, then you have a document from the Oregon Department of Agriculture with reference to food laws and what they have to, to go forward with. And that gets into this, this creative use of wild yeast cultivation and other bacteria that they use. Because I'm very suspect of that. And I guess that's about it, except for, you know, you have to ask yourself, okay, which one of these documents prevails? Because they, if you look at it, C-10-14, and compare it to the current document, E-0616, there are material differences in which, at the time, a different principle of the Planning and Development Department was in power. Now, in this one, he says, "Well, you're supposed to have 100 square feet of space in this barn, basically, for every car." So, if you have 150 car spaces that's permitted on this property that we've already discussed, matter of record, multiply 150 times 100, that's 15,000 square feet. Do they have 15,000 square feet? Or somewhere between C-10-14 to E-0616, that there was a falling out, and they don't really need that requirement. So, see, it's imperative to know these historical documents, to see how they progress over time under different administrations, to appreciate the position that the county administrator is putting in. Because even the Attorney's Office, the Attorney's Office, they don't know that this happened. I mean, there's so many documents that they're carrying about, all they're trying to do is to keep this county out of either Circuit Court or Federal District Court. And I have the opinion that there's several potential tickets, first-class tickets to Federal District Court, as opposed to Circuit Court. So, having said all this, and hopefully, I wasn't too long-winded, I hope I covered all the bases. And that means all the bases up to today, because, um, oh, there's another committee I don't think to utilize. And that's the Yanville County Local Alcohol and Drug Planning, I don't think to utilize, or I don't think the Planning and Development Department utilized any of these committees, I don't think it's given. Well, we, we're going to give, you know, whatever, they can explain for themselves. So, we have that, but all of these other documents would have yet to be ascertained, are not going to be included as part of the record, because I may not know until I get them, how they fit into the record. And so, I would assume, and I don't know how you can make a decision today, except for the fact, you can act upon an incomplete application for this agritourism business, as defined in your packets, because those signatures were not verified by a notary public, which is a requirement. Otherwise, it wouldn't be there. But that's up to your honors, your wisdom, and your jurisprudence to render a decision one way or the other, how you're going to go forward. But from my position, make no mistake, I am not going to have a bar across the street. I'm not going to have 250 cars coming and going out of a bar, disturbing the peace and tranquility of my pastureland and that of my neighbors. Now, whether or not they want to form a class and give our County Counsel a little workout, that remains to be seen, and hopefully, it can be avoided, because I certainly just want to be neighborly in all matters, especially with applicant and his family, because I have no valid choices. He's operating on what the county has given him permission to do. And so, therefore, make no mistake, I want to love my neighbor like myself. And that's the hardest commandment out of all of God's little commands, I guarantee. But that being said, I appreciate the time that you gave me, and I look forward to working with you, especially with this analysis of these exclusive farm zones, because I think that they should be included to lesser farms of 20 acres for the purposes of stimulating the agricultural aspects of our great county, and to provide food stuff, from my perspective, for the senior folks and for the disenfranchised.
Are there any questions for the opponent at this point?
No, not at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wall. I now have before me, uh, three intent to speak cards, uh, excuse me, I don't know when they came in, so I'm just going to call them the way they're stacked here. Vicki Shepherd, if you could come forward, please, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Vicki Shepherd. My address is 30230 Northeast Benjamin Road, Newburgh, Oregon. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'm going to apologize a lot of what David Wall has said has already been said. I want to apologize to Christian and his wife, truly, because this application really has put neither against neither, and Benjamin Road is a wonderful place to live. Um, I also have not received a lot of the notices that came about because of this, and Joyce has been my person, she has called me and said, "Did you receive this?" And I said, "No, I didn't understand anything about it." So a lot of times when I, you know, have the paperwork I've turned in or whatever, it's because I've been notified from someone else, so I don't know where the mail is going, I don't know. That being said, I'm going to read what I've written, because that's the best way I can speak, and some of it we've already turned before. I request the application for Christian Di Benadelli, Moss and People Brewery, be denied. This application should not be approved on its agricultural merits. Christian Di Benadelli is the son of Ellen McFlur, and this tavern is located on Ellen McFlur's lands, which is zone EF20, exclusive farm use. According to the tavern's website, they are currently operating four days a week, Thursdays 4 to 10, Friday 12 to 10, Saturday and Sunday 12 to 8. I have had attached copies from the Moss and People's website showing their operating hours. I've given a packet before the start of testifying. I may be confused, but I thought the application was for 18 events. I would have, I would like to have it clarified, what is an event? I also don't see hops being grown on the property. I work for a hazel nut company, and the only agriculture I see grown on the acreage are hazel nut trees. I am not sure how hazel nuts are promoting an activity of farm use for the tavern. Although the tavern is located on 21 acres, it sits on the farthest corner of that acreage, right next to Benjamin Road. There are four homes across from the tavern. Two of those homes are approximately 100 feet away from the activities of the patrons. There are no trees or shrubbery that surround the tavern to deflect the noise of its operations. In fact, three of the neighbors' views are of the outhouses that have been placed on the property. It can be argued that A to Z Winery is the tavern's neighbor, which is true. The winery borders McFlur's 21.53 acres. Access to the winery is located along 99W of Well Chapel Road. The access to the winery is also approximately a half a mile away from the tavern itself, and does not interfere with the rural neighbors. A to Z Winery did purchase 45 acres of Charleston Ellen McFlur's property several years ago, and a portion of the winery does now border Benjamin Road. The tavern has a small indoor bar and an outdoor area with picnic tables for the gathering of its patrons. The tables sit within a few feet of Benjamin, Benjamin Road, with no sound barrier to protect the noise of the tavern from the neighbors. The application approves the attendance of up to 250 people, and also the use of artificial amplification. This diminishes the livability, quality, value, and usage of my own land and that of my neighbors. Benjamin Road is a one-mile-long country road, which consists mostly of homes situated on 1 to 5 acres. It is a quiet area, but noise does carry throughout. The approval of this tavern allowing up to 150 vehicles and 250 people is just unthinkable. Were the traffic concerns that have been addressed in the past regarding Benjamin Road even considered with the approval of this application? I have submitted, with my objections, copies of papers sent to both John Phelan and Bill Gillie in the past concerning the dangers of Benjamin Road. One submission has the signature of 63 residents of the area and their traffic concerns regarding the narrow road, fast speeds, and curves along Benjamin. The approval of this application for a tavern, with the approval of it, of this application for a tavern, you are now allowing 150 vehicles to access an already overburdened Benjamin. If you were to drive Benjamin, you will notice many signs asking people to, "Please, drive slow." Several neighbors, myself included, have had near misses with vehicles while trying to get our own mail. Is the county or the state department willing to improve, improve the road conditions or put a traffic signal at Benjamin to help the flow of traffic entering and exiting onto 99W? There have already been several accidents at the intersection on Benjamin Road and 99W. With this approval of the tavern, you increase the dangers of drinking and driving in the area. Another grave concern I have is fire, and that is a great concern to me. This is a rural area with no access to fire hydrants. All firefighting has to be done with water brought in from a posse hydrant. This area in the suburbs becomes a tinderbox, and it would take only one careless missed cigarette, and we could all be in danger. When you have up to 250 people approved for an outdoor area where there is drinking and smoking, maybe, things can and do happen. This is just the appropriate place for a tavern. But when I talk about fire, I, I know that for a fact. Uh, one of the houses on Benjamin caught on fire, they had to close both ends of Benjamin, they had to go way back on Springburg, and they brought in repeat little trucks carrying water in to get the fire out. If there's a fire there, it could just, it could be real nature, and that is a concern. Thank you, I really appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Dammun? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joyce Dammun. I live at 20160 on northeast Benjamin Road. I live across from the tavern. I know he's calling it a brewery, but to me, a brewery, you make beer, and then you sell it elsewhere. There's a lot of breweries around in downtown Portland, and they just opened up one in Vancouver, and they call it a brewpub, because it's, um, uh, right in downtown Vancouver, in a business district, and that's where it should be, if it's a brewpub. Uh, there's a smart bar across from Freddy's, could sell his beer other places for the brewery, but, uh, and I object to that because of all the cars, and it's hard for me to get out of my, what hasn't been mentioned is that the stitches on either side of that road, if a car were to go in it, they couldn't get out. And I have all the room I can spare to get out of my driveway, and when they're coming out of the brewery, I mean, it's, it can be dangerous, and what is real dangerous is getting into Benjamin Road from Hoover Hill. If you're coming down that hill, and I've seen police that sit in the hazel nut farm, and they give out tickets, because they drive faster than 55 miles an hour. And Benjamin Road is right at the bottom, right past the hazel nut farm, right at the bottom of that hill, and they come down that hill right on your fenders, and you have to stop to get into Benjamin. And on one side of Benjamin is the pond, and then if there's a car coming out of Benjamin, and you're trying to get into Benjamin, and you've got all these cars coming down, it's, it's very dangerous. It needs to be widened, but I doubt if the county's going to do it. And at night, it's even worse, because there's no light there, uh, it's hard to see, and the headlights coming down the hill, it blinds you when you try to get in there. And that is my big concern, is, is the traffic. And I did see the sheriff's department, who sat across from the little street down the road at Putnam, and of course, they come in there and they see them, so they slow down before they even get there. And, but I clocked them at 60 miles an hour. In fact, we did have, one time, a policeman come out with his, you know, traffic gun, whatever they call them, and he was clocking them at 60 miles an hour. So we got, finally got it reduced to 40, and that isn't, isn't enough. I mean, they still go by too fast. And I'm worried with the brewery across the street, that somebody's going to get hit or killed. That is my big concern. And when they do come out of the brewery or turn around, all the headlights come into my house. I'm, I'm right across from the car park, where the 250 people we want are. And anyway, I appreciate you listening to me. I said, "Dear pity, pity neighbor against neighbor." And I really feel bad about this, but, thank you.
Thank you. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Just before you said, "The record be left open," my home printer copier just couldn't handle it, and so my supportments referred to, since staffs are not into this entirely. My name is Catherine Jurnstead, my address is 8156 Northeast Middle Springs Road, Carpen. I'm here on behalf of the Friends Beyond the County today. And our organization works to protect the natural resources and implementation of the land use, planning goals, policies, and laws here in the county, and throughout the state, for both the protection of urban and rural residents. And I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the docket E-0616, and appeal the 18 acre tourism events approved there, the beer tastings at the brewery, and will enumerate the following reasons that the application doesn't comply with the approval criteria and must be denied. First and foremost, it's a misapplication of the agritourism rules. Under ORS 215.283 and Yamhill County zoning ordinance 1013, agritourism events must be incidental and subordinate to existing commercial farm use of the tract and necessary to support the commercial farm uses of the commercial agriculture operating in the area, close quote. The poor fee on premises beer consumption proposed by the applicant doesn't meet these standards. In addition, it's in significant violation of the home occupation approval granted to the brewery. Some of these things have been alluded to before, but more specifically, the proposed events are clearly identified in the applicant as supporting the home occupancy, not Philbert or, sorry, Joyce by calling him Philberts. Oregon calls out breweries as manufacturing, and I use as my reference here, something as recent as House Phil 4053 from the 2016, um, short between the farm use occurring on the parcel and the events. The applicant has failed to demonstrate that the proposed events are necessary to support commercial agriculture, either on the parcel or else area, as required by statute and ordinance. To the extent that the application has mentioned some local ingredient used in beer making, for example, the future plans for fruit trees, a few test hop plants, cultivating wild yeast, these do not rise to the standard of necessary to support commercial farm use. The applicant is already operating, but is essentially a tavern on sites at the facility. That is not approved in either of the existing documents. So, um, county's approval letter specifically states the events proposed in the docket ease of the existing hours, apologize for editing on the fly, distinct from the existing hours outside. Moreover, the approval of 150 cars via tation on traffic.